Be able to have a bit of a break before the regular meeting gets started.
Sounds good to me. Uh, well, um, like to welcome everyone to the um, City of Wildwood Site Plan Subcommittee of the Planning and Zoning Commission um, for October fourth, twenty twenty one. Uh, roll call of, roll, roll call of commission members, please.
Commissioner Humphrey. Commissioner Ward. Commissioner Cohen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Royals. Commissioner Clayton. Here. Commissioner Depler. Commissioner Jackson.
Here.
Chair Beatty.
Here.
House Member Brost. Mayor Bowlin. Thank you.
Alright, so, um, we have one item on the agenda tonight. Um, uh, site development plan, um, review of the prime place at Wildwood. Um, any questions or comments from city staff?
With your permission, Mr. Chair, I'd like to just give a brief introduction of the project. For some, it may be new. For others, it's been a while since we've had anything formally submitted on this relative to design, engineering, and other components. Mr. Kennedy, uh, the applicant is on the call and we'll promote him here shortly so he can provide background information and respond to committee members' comments or questions regarding the submittal. And with your permission, I'll just jump right in, Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Chair and members of the Site Plan Subcommittee, first and foremost, Mr. Cross, Mr. Newberry, and I, along with Rick Brown, would like to thank you for your attendance tonight. As you know, the Site Plan Subcommittee is the first step in an approval prop- process that actually ends the zoning um, process associated with a particular property or properties. So, it's very important and it's your first chance as committee members to see what's been going on since the recommendation relative to the rezoning of the property was completed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. As I noted, the applicant is in, um, is at the meeting tonight. We'll promote him here very shortly. And what I'd like to do first is just kind of go through the materials you received in advance of tonight's committee, subcommittee meeting. First, um, Mr. Newberry and I provided you the Site Development Plan Package. And often you hear the department reference this, and what it includes is the Site Development Plan. And in this case, the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, a key element to ensure that erosion does not occur and cause problems in downstream properties and our natural system of creeks, ephemeral drainage ways, et cetera. There is also an, a public space plan along with a ADA accessibility plan. There is the conditions associated with the property. There are two pages of those. There are site details, meaning cross-sections relating to the design and engineering associated with roads, sidewalks, parking lot areas, et cetera. The streetscape items are shown in detail as well, such as street lights. There is also a lighting plan, a landscaping plan. And then in the packet of information, Mr. Newberry and I provided you the actual ordinance that was recently, um, updated relative to timeframes for the submittal of the Site Development Plan action by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then, also, we thought it appropriate to include the stormwater calculations in this particular case, given the importance of this factor now that we know we have some issues in the Cox Creek border shade and this property is in the Cox Creek border shade. And then kind of ancillary to all of that, the Architectural Review Board of the City has been reviewing this particular set of elevations for the building for a number of months. And ultimately, just this past month, approved the elevations for the building. And so, Mr. Newberry and I included those who kind of see what the building is going to look like relative to where it's placed on the lot and all the ancillary things associated with it. Two items were not provided to you, and certainly they can be in the next couple of weeks if not longer. And that was the geotechnical report, which has been reviewed by our Department of Public Works and then a Phase One Environmental Assessment. Again, that Phase One Environmental Assessment did not find any problems with the site in particular relative to the two and a half acres. So, that's the information that's been given to you in advance of tonight's, uh, discussion. And I just want to kind of go over the project very briefly and then kind of conclude the department's presentation and open up for any questions or comments of Mr. Newberry, Mr. Brown, Mr. Cross, or I. It's important to note that since two thousand eight, there has not been the construction of a new commercial building in town center area. So, this is kind of a landmark in many regards because the first floor of this five-story building will be commercial space. It is intended to be leasable space for a range of commercial-type uses within the town center downtown district. Besides the commercial component, there are four stories of this five-story building that are intended to be residential under the Neighborhood General District. And we're using the airspace to increase the utilization of the two-and-a-half-acre site and to bring a daytime population into town center as well as for nighttime purposes as well. The five-story building has been studied by the Planning and Zoning Commission as part of the zoning process to ensure it was compatible with the other buildings in the built environment around it, such as the hotel and theater. And as the Planning and Zoning Commission members may recall, given the character of the theater and the height of the hotel, the five-story building worked very well at this location and did not look out of place relative to its size or height. Better way to term it. On the site development plan, you can see that parking has been identified both from the standpoint of the utilization of Main Street, which is allowable under our town center plan, and then those off-street parking spaces that are shown at the rear of the building screened by it, but certainly accessible for the purposes of the residential units, which total sixty in this particular, uh, project. Along with that, there are stormwater management features which are identified. There is, of course, the large detention basin that is shared not only by this particular project, but also the theater, City Hall, and other properties that are part of the Coleman Project, Coleman Properties Project, which includes the hotel and other lots such as Anthology. Landscape plan identifies those areas on the site that are intended to be landscaped and for all intensive purposes, create the aesthetics both in the parking lot area and around the building itself. The lighting plan is under review by the city's consultant, Randy Burkett Lighting Design. And as intended with all of our lighting, uh, solutions for projects, they are intended to light the areas that need to be lit, not, um, just not impact the night sky, not create nuisance glare, and certainly not trespass on the properties where light should not be placed. In this particular instance with the neighbors such as the theater and other planned commercial development on the vacant lots abutting the site to the east, the lighting issue of trespass is certainly not as prominent as we see in other situations, but still, the night sky and nuisance glare are key to any project in Wildwood, Wildwood. Along with those items, I do want to draw attention that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended and the City Council concurred that the theater and this particular project not only have cross-access, meaning they will, you, a individual of, a group will be able to drive a vehicle between the two without any obstruction, but there is also cross-parking. The theater has an excess of parking spaces. So, in the event that there's a major activity, party, or something at this particular project, there is additional off-street parking that is now shared between the theater and this particular use. I think it's important to note that East Gate Lane will be extended to serve this particular site. That area where East Gate Lane will be located will be dedicated to the city of Wildwood and for future public purposes. And so again, we're adding to the network of streets in town center area, the downtown district, and creating more options for access into and out of these locations. All told, the departments have reviewed this particular project, had a set of comments that it's submitted to the applicant, which were responded to by the appropriate consultants, whether it be the consulting engineer, the landscape architect, et cetera. And tonight, we feel comfortable presenting this particular project to the Site Plan Subcommittee for comments, opinions, and suggestions. I would note, there are a couple of items that are outstanding from the department's perspective. We are still reviewing closely the public space plan, making sure that those components that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended are inclusive. And we're specifically looking at the number of bicycle racks, given this, the downtown district will be a, what I consider a center for, uh, activity. And as you know, many of our residents like to ride bicycles to town center. Also, we are still looking at the accessibility plan. The department still has concerns about proximity of accessible spaces to the main entry into the residential building. And we like to think that we can address that better than what is shown on the plan at this time. Other than those, I would say that the Department of Planning feels comfortable again presenting this to the Site Plan Subcommittee, and with the Chair's permission, I would defer to Mr. Brown, Mr. Newberry, or Mr. Cross if they have any other comments relating to the plan at this time. After their comments, again, we'll all be available for any, um, questions or other from the Site Plan Subcommittee members, and thank you for your attention during the presentation.
Thanks, Joe. Um, do any of the three of you have any more comments?
I have nothing to add, Mr. Chair. Thank you for asking.
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Right, uh, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, uh, Joe, am I correct that I should stay on mute during this, uh, hearing?
Yes, Mr. Cohen, given your role in this particular project, you certainly can attend, but I prefer you not to participate.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Humphrey?
So, I, I've been looking at these papers and I kind of some, I have just one question. This one for the signs, the page that you gave us for the signs. Um, I just have a little bit of, of confusion on where exactly these are going to go. Could you, uh, maybe, um, tell me where those go, please? Just, just curious.
Uh, certainly, Ms. Humphrey. Uh, first and foremost, the department had encouraged and the Planning and Zoning Commission had supported placing a sign, an identification sign, so to speak, at the northeasternmost corner of the project, and if Mr. Newberry could go to the Site Development Plan. So, if you'll bear with me as we share a screen. One of the key public space areas is in this northeast corner, which is defined by Main Street and East Gate Lane. And Mr. Newberry is showing it. It's identified by outdoor seating, and that outdoor seating is somewhat segregated from the public sidewalk area by a wall. And so, one of the signs, according to the ordinance, should be a component of that wall. So, it identifies the project, prime place. It creates a prominent location at the two, at the intersection of the two town center streets. The other, I believe, is at the entry into the residential area, and I turn that more of a directional sign. And if Mr. Newberry, thank you, again, I appreciate the assistance. And so, I, if you could kind of enlarge that area for me, thank you. And so, as you can see, there is, uh, the, the access into the parking area and directional signs are authorized. I believe the third sign is more toward the northwest corner of the property, that which again has a prominent location on Main Street near Fountain Place. And again, we've not talked a great deal about signage at this stage, but in the department's opinion, if we can make it a component of the building or the retaining wall or the garden wall there, I think we have achieved a lot in terms of minimizing the impact. Miss Saka, I hope that answered your question.
It did. Thank you very much.
Oh, I guess one question I had, uh, you mentioned extending East Gate Lane. Is that just going to be extended through the area that's being developed, or will that go all the way to Manchester?
Mr. Beatty, all we can do is require the installation of the improvement in conjunction with the project, the project boundaries. Anything beyond that is off-site. Typically, we will try to work a cooperative agreement with the petitioner, the applicant, and uh, as I've mentioned before, and use TGA funds to complete a street. But there is no TGA assessment. This, this particular property was part of a larger parcel of ground that was owned by Greenberg Development. And they donated the land for City Hall, so to speak, and received a credit to the traffic generation assessment fee for all future development on the remaining portion of that parcel of ground. So, we'll get an extension of the street, uh, all the way to Manchester Road.
Okay, thank you. Any other, uh, questions, comments, concerns? And then, are you just looking for a motion to go forward with this?
Uh, eventually, I will ask the Site Plan Subcommittee to provide a direction or recommendation that then Mr. Newberry and I can compare, prepare for the full Planning and Zoning Commission. But, Mr. Chair, I would ask if you don't mind of give Mr. Kennedy a chance maybe to explain some of the details I might have glossed over or anything that I've been, been inaccurate with. Certainly, that's a possibility as well. And so, with your permission, Mr. Kennedy might like to speak at this time.
Sure thing. Uh, Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, uh, can you hear me then? Am I on microphone and everything?
You're good.
Thank you, Travis. Uh, let me begin by saying that I really have enjoyed the past couple of years working with the City of Wildwood, with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and particularly with the staff, uh, Mr. Newberry and Mr. Vunich. Uh, Joe, you introduced the project, uh, in such a profan- professional and articulate manner. Uh, you covered, I'm sure, everything I can think of. I can add some things that, uh, I'm sure Ed would like to add, uh, to the things that, uh, you didn't mention, and you wouldn't know. Uh, but, um, we've had some great meetings with potential, uh, retail residents that are interested in moving into the building, and you mentioned, uh, your concern with bicycle rack racks. And, and you should know, Joe, that, um, uh, Road Crew, which is a bicycle and coffee shop, is very, very interested in that corner uh, of the building that has the outdoor seating, as you pointed out earlier, where the sign will be. And, uh, he's, he was asking, w- well, do you think I'll be able to get bicycle racks there? I said, "The city will let you put all the bicycle racks you want." I'm not sure of that. So, uh, we are looking forward to him. He was excited. He's a, he's a Wildwood resident. He, he understands the importance of this project and a building of that nature to the future and the catalyst that it can cause for town center. Um, I'm appreciative of, of your efforts and, uh, the efforts we've made. Very close to closing this thing now, and we're pushing towards that day before the end of this uh, fall season. Let me see. Uh, what did you not mention? Well, you know, all of the, uh, the residential, as you said, and the retail is well separated. Uh, residential is to the south and its entrance is specific and unique and different from the entrances to any of the other, uh, retail spaces in the building. Uh, from the south, the residents will enter, and from the north, uh, the, most of the retail will go on on a daily basis with some parking in the rear. Uh, however, those retailers have a breezeway that we incorporated in the building between the retail spaces so that they do not have to walk around the building to get to the front for their convenience and the convenience of our retailers. I, um, I over, overheard you say something about an entrance after bicycle racks, uh, Mr. Vunich. But I didn't get it all. What was the number two things that you were still looking at? What was the second one, an entrance, I thought you said?
With the Chair's permission, I'll respond to Mr. Kennedy's question.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy, I was noting that, and it's, it's a discussion that's been held previously about the ADA parking spaces and their distribution. The majority that are credited or toward are on Main Street and accessible, in my opinion, or readily to the retail component. And there are, uh, two spaces shown to the rear of the building, which I think are primary for the residential component. And then there are four spaces or so that the theater has in close proximity. I just want to investigate if there's another couple of spaces that could be placed nearer that southern entrance into the residential building so that we aren't, we are creating what I believe is the best-case scenario. Thank you.
Okay, I, I, I concur with that, and I'm sure we can find a couple of more, um, with, and work that out with you very, without any difficulty at all. Okay, uh, Ed, uh, can, can, uh, did I forget anything? No? Okay, do this effect. Have I covered enough? Yeah, any questions? Good, Scott.
Yeah, Commissioner Humphrey raised her hand first and.
Well, I'm not sure if this should be a question for you, Mr. Kennedy, or if it would be for Mr. Vunich, um, but I have three. Um, first of all, my, my first question would be that in the past when we talked about parking in the Main Street area, um, I was told that the area, say, between, um, the dentist and, uh, Anthology, that's all public parking and such. And so, I was just curious if any of this is public parking that's open to the public. Number one. Number two, my second question was, I'd like to know if there's any screening on the detention pond um, at all, but as I, as I read these drawings, I don't see any, and maybe I'm not quite understanding that. And my third question was regarding the handicap parking and the drawing. Um, on the south side of the building, it says that there is a, uh, oh, shoot, uh, electrical box maybe in the parking lot. So, I'm just curious, how tall is that, and, um, if there is any handicap parking that can go anywhere near that? Because it seems to me that that would be a closer place for the parking, maybe not. So, that's it, my three things.
I'm sorry, Ms. Humphrey. Um, you said electrical what?
Uh, let me grab my other drawing. Hold on. I've got them, I've got them all spread out here, so just.
Generator.
Oh, the generator?
The generator, yeah. It says transformer or generator, yeah. So.
No, no, are you sure? Which, the generate, there is a generator and a transformer.
It says that they're both in the same spot on my drawing, on the very first top drawing, yeah.
Okay, the, is it enclosed?
I have no idea. Yes, it is, okay.
Okay, yeah, that's a very large generator. And, uh, no, I, 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 I'm, uh, yeah, the, thank you. Generator and transformer, yeah. Those are large pieces of equipment. They have to be enclosed. Uh, I wish there were a better place, but, uh, everybody's got, uh, terms of, in conditions about where we can put things and how far away they can be from the aspects of the building that they have to serve.
Okay, I wasn't asking you to move that. I'm sorry if I was confusing. I was just stating that maybe somewhere over there we could put, if there was a place to put, um, some more handicapped accessible parking near there. I didn't know. And then, my, my piggyback on that was, how tall is that generator? Sorry, I didn't mean to confuse.
The height of the generator is, uh, don't hold me to this, I don't know. I'm gonna say the wall around it is, um, eight feet high. Um, let, let, let's get to your, let's, let me try to get to your, um, that was your last question, your third question. And, and handicap parking, we, we're going to try to get as close to the main entry to the building as we possibly can because we will have valet parking, uh, for them anyway um, at the front entrance. There's some covered parking next to those, um, generator is, is next to the covered parking and therefore kind of cuddles up to that structure. And, uh, you probably didn't notice that, I see, and that's, that's an important reason we put it there because it's, it's kind of on the end of that, uh, canopy.
Got it.
If you, if you, if it, I haven't seen the rent, the elevations, but, um, hmm, I know they're hard to follow because you get an elevation and it turns a corner, and if you're not familiar with reading them, you, you can't sometimes make sense of them.
Right, I, I thought that the covered parking was up against the building, so it's not, it's out in the lot?
Oh, yeah, that's, uh, one, one driveway away from the building.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, and then the, uh, detention area, you called the detention, we call it a rain garden. Uh, the, a detention area is more like what's behind the theater. That's called the detention, uh, water detention pool. And, um, we have our, our, uh, rain garden is landscaped. And, um, we kind of leave it open to accessibility if you want to get close to it, sit on the hill and look at it. Uh, it's much like the rain garden in the rear of, uh, City Hall. Where you cross a little bridge to get in the, uh,
Got it.
Second level door. So, that's got a lot of vegetation in it. And then you had a parking question as your first question, uh, something regarding the um, public p- parking?
Yes, sir.
Well, we have public parking and both, uh, available because it exists on the front of the building that counts as a part of our developments and requirements. And we have, uh, public parking in the rear of the building.
That was my question.
Oh, okay. Yes, ma'am. Welcome. Thank you, thank you. Uh, anyone else?
Right, Commissioner Jackson?
Yeah, I, I think I got confused. So, I heard you talking about retail and then residential. Is this going to be a residential place as well, or is it but up to it?
Oh, yeah, the, um, the ground floor, we have ten thousand square feet of, uh, retail space and, um, and then we have about three, forty-four hundred, forty-five hundred square feet of a lobby and management space for the residential, as well as common areas and elevators to get to the, oh, Travis is showing us pictures again.
Okay.
That's the retail on.
I totally get it. I totally get it now. I was, so anytime we get into like the residential apartment type stuff, then it's like, is there enough traffic or parking for the residents and what's the rates? I mean, Mr. Cohen led that on the one we had across the way, right? He, he knew, you, you knew all the, how many people could park and how many people move out and et cetera. Is there any studies that you've done or any issues with this coming up? I just, I just want to head this off, um, when people put in stuff for residents, there has to be so many parking to accommodate so people can park and et cetera.
So we don't, these are, I think we have plenty of parking typically in senior living. They'll argue that, well, they're, they're if the age is, you know, I'm gonna say 85 and up today, it's maybe 80 to 95 and up, people are still driving. But in the past, they pretty much parked their cars and leave them alone. So we would assign a, in many, in, in previous, all the previous senior living developments we've been involved in have had a half a car per unit. That's not the case in Wildwood. Don't be, don't be, don't be concerned. In Wildwood, I believe we have one and a half car per unit. And we've got 60 units. So that's 90 cars we have on the lot for our 60 units. Yeah, that works out.
You know, I, I just brought it up because it's come up in other P and Zs. Is there enough parking? And then was a study done and all the other stuff? I didn't want to get right down to the end and then everyone's going back and redesigning. This happens over and over again, so that's why I asked the questions. It was more for Joe Vunich, I guess, than it was you, Mr. Kennedy. Because I just don't want to get down when everyone's approved everything. And that's always one of the last things that comes up, right? So
Okay.
Just heading that off.
If memory serves, Commissioner Jackson, I think we did, parking did come up in some of the prior meetings before you were on the board. So
Oh, fair enough. Okay, forget, forget what I said. I
No worries. That's why we're doing this.
And, Mr. Chair, with your permission, Mr. Jackson, your point's well taken. And oftentimes with senior living facilities or those that may be orientated more toward a senior population, we always hear that they drive less, they don't have as many vehicles. And inevitably, like in the case of Meadows at Wildwood, most of the residents that live there were in their 50s and 60s and had two cars and were still working. Fortunately, they accommodated a two-car garage as a minimum. And so here, we did allow just a space and a half per residential unit. But that's why we also required the cross-parking agreement. Because spaces are available at the theater lot within a 300-foot distance, which is the maximum they can be. So even if, let's say, someone has two or three cars, there is available parking that can be shared. So we think we've covered the bases pretty well. And hopefully that'll be the case as construction begins and development occurs and units are rented or leased and people move in.
Okay, last question, this town center, around the town center, so people get cranky. Joe, is there anything that's like problematic areas that you're working through right now? Or does this seem to be going okay with the Town Center People Committee? And do we have anything we got to worry about here? Because this sounds like it's going to go through pretty, pretty smoothly at face, face value here. Is there anything going to come up that we need to all think about right now?
Well, there's two things the department always considers. The first is, what happens when people move in? And the movie lets out late at night and the kids are standing out there waiting for mom or dad or whoever's going to pick them up and drive them home. And what we found in other town center settings is, is when people buy a unit, they expect peace and quiet regardless if it's in the heart of the downtown district. In this case, I believe Mr. Kennedy's leasing those. So we won't have that ultimate push-pull because it is in the heart of town center. And people should be aware that there'll be times when it's noisier than, let's say, out west of Route 109. So that's the first thing we consider. The other, the Town Center Update Team, that group of volunteers that updated the Town Center Plan, they were aware of the prime place. And I believe without exception, they endorsed it because they saw the benefits of additional retail, particularly in conjunction with residential component. And they certainly were anxious about the residential component because we're bringing people into downtown district that maybe they're during the daytime and can visit restaurants, shop, do things like that. So Town Center Update Team was very positive. Ms. Helfry was on that, and she may want to comment as well. Thank you.
Well, the only thing that I would like to say is that they have been, we've been working with Mr. Kennedy from the very beginning of pre-COVID. He's been in front of us a couple of times. And so I think they've done a very good job, as far as I can tell, with working with the city to work out all the kinks. And I have the utmost faith in Mr. Vunich and his staff. I think they, they are fantastic at finding the little things. So I have no problem with it and
Sounds good. No quiet, no further questions here.
Commissioner Clayton, did I see you raise your hand at one point?
Not intentionally, no.
Okay, just, just making sure.
Mr. Chair, if there are no further comments, questions, or suggestions, the department would respectfully request a direction, a consensus on a recommendation to approve with, you know, let's say, the issue of ADA parking spaces and bicycle racks addressed. But other than that, if there is items that need to be included, we're certainly wanting to address them now.
I can't think of anything, but I also don't think I'm in a position to make the motion. Commissioner Helfry?
So clarification, you're looking for a motion to say that we approve what we see in front of us? And we'd like for you to be able to go forward. Is that correct, Mr. Vunich?
Yes, I'm seeking consensus amongst the Site Plan Subcommittees to proceed forward with writing a favorable recommendation.
So I, I would make that motion.
I have no problem seconding it, but I don't know why you need a motion to move forward before you bring it to the P and Z for a motion to approve, but okay.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Helfry and a second by Commissioner Jackson. Roll call vote.
Excuse me, thank you. Commissioner Helfry?
Yes.
Commissioner Clayton?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cohen?
Abstaining.
Thank you. Chair Beatty?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you all. And the reason we do this is the process kind of dictates that the Site Plan Subcommittee makes the recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission. All the department does is author the report on behalf of the Site Plan Subcommittee members. And so it's just the process we've had and it seems to work. Then you, as the Site Plan Subcommittee members that attended tonight, can speak to the, the presentation, the issues that were discussed, not just the department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate your votes and your confidence. And we're going to make you appreciate this project in just a few more months.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Before you leave, one question, is that the road crew that has the shop down on Tower Grove? Or Morgan Ford and Tower Grove South?
Yes.
Yes. Morgan Ford, yes, that rings a bell.
His name is Mike, his name is Michael Orso. And he's had a conversation with me here at the city and, and is excited about working with Mr. Cohen and Mr. Kennedy in terms of perhaps opening a shop there. So we're looking forward to letting that happen. Chair Beatty, I just, I hit my hand up. I wanted to ask a quick question. With Commissioner Cohen abstaining, and I guess there were four yeses, did, was that, did that, did that motion pass? Was it a quorum that that motion passed?
Cross, that's a very good question. Under our bylaws, the Site Plan Subcommittee can be no less than four and no more than 10, which is the maximum number. So with the four yes votes, the motion to prepare a favorable recommendation did pass.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you, Mr. Vunich.
No, thank you. It was a great question.
Thank you, Chair Beatty.
Thank you. And yeah, I don't do coffee, but I liked their chai latte when I was down there.
Would you, Mr. Cross, you can see Ed about a commission for, for finding road crew for us. Thank you very much.
Now, we, Mr. Orso and I are having a conversation on a different matter as well. So we'll be having lunch here soon. So I hope it all works out with I think he had submitted an LOI or something to Mr. Cohen and Mr. Kennedy. So we'll see where that goes. We're looking forward to having him part of the, part of Wildwood.
Sounds good.
All right, you guys have a good evening and I'll leave you now. Good day.
Thank you. I guess with that, a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Made by Commissioner Cohen, seconded by Commissioner Helfry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? All right, thank you. We will see you in 20 minutes.
Hey, Travis. Did you get those?
I'm sorry.
Travis.
Oh, give me a moment.
I came up and signed those.
Oh, okay, thank you. I hadn't grabbed it yet, but thanks for
Okay, see you on 20.
All right. Bye.